Now, it's recording.
Yeah, alright. Okay, you guys want to get started?
Yes, please.
Sorry for the delay, some serious technical difficulty going on there. So this is a joint leadership workshop between the BOE and the Scarborough Town Council. It started off as a joint leadership workshop, the vice chair of the council, Don Hamill, cannot make it today, and I believe the vice chair of the BOE is, Kristen, I believe you're sitting in for Leanne today because you're more active on the committee, I think my guess is that's why we did this.
Yeah, I just thought it was, it made more sense to have our long-range planning chair and somebody from the building steering committee, because we had a bunch of shifting around this fall when I reassigned all the committees, and so, you know, in terms of who's in touch with this work the most is definitely Kristen, so.
Yep, that makes sense. And just for those that watch this later on YouTube, because it's being recorded, you know, this is not replacing any sort of work that's going to be done by joint finance or even towards the typical budget process. I think just because this CIP request has had a year to year and a half history of a little bit of confusion, and with the pandemic, I think all we're trying to do is level set here and brainstorm before the actual, before any of the actual real work gets done. So I've used this before, but I view this as a step zero meeting. This is not step one or two. I'm not here to answer, answer or ask any questions. I think what we're trying to do is just discuss, you know, the probably more of what, what some of the work might look like, not what the answers are, but you know, what, what do we, what would we like to see? So just if you are watching this, to be clear, we're not getting out in front of the finance committee, not interested in talking about numbers. I'm sure there'll be plenty of work at the joint finance level that I won't be a part of, and Mr. Clutcher will be. So with that, Sarah, April, do you want to kind of jump in from there or add to it, and then we can, we can proceed?
Sure, I can jump in. So, you know, just to reiterate what Paul just said, you know, the board sees the building, the consolidated building and the CIP request as a challenge. It's something that we built into our board goals for this year to make sure that that CIP request gets advanced. And one of the, I think, deficits that we had last year, and for a lot of reasons, I mean, there's enough blame to go around, was that it was very difficult to communicate exactly where the process was, and, and then the pandemic hit. And so our building steering committee has kind of been on hiatus since last spring. We did secure some funding in last year's CIP, if you recall, it's $100,000. That money has not been allocated, that we haven't re-engaged with the building steering committee since the budget passed. But we knew at the time that, that that amount was not going to be sufficient to cover the potential request. And so we need planning money. And like Paul said, step zero is making sure that, you know, we all have an understanding that this request is coming, and in order for this to be successful, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what the request is, and if there are things that we can do as an elected body, whether it's, you know, the board to the town or the town council to the town, like, you know, we all just want to be on the same page in terms of making sure that this request is, is understood and, and that we, that we don't, that people don't feel like we're springing it on them, you know?
And really, I mean, this is, this amounts to making you guys whole from what you wanted last year, right? I mean, because you guys wanted somewhere in the neighborhood of 350 last year, correct? So, so it's not, so you know, you guys aren't necessarily coming back for quote, "more and more money." I think it's almost a staggered approach at this point, right? I mean, is that, was 350 approximately the number last year? It was somewhere close to that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, and we are trying to get an update on whether or not that's still an accurate number, but I think, you know, within that ballpark certainly.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so I, actually, I think it's very thoughtful of you guys to ask for feedback on this and to bring it, you know, even before the budget season starts, but what might help me is if you explain what your intention would have been last year or now to do with those funds. We pulled the council and we certainly got some feedback on it, but I think it makes sense maybe to start with, what are your plans? What are you looking to accomplish with it?
So this is where I'm going to lean on KT a little bit. You know, I wasn't on the building steering committee, I was on finance, but, you know, we've had a leadership shift, and so Kristen has been in touch with the previous building steering committee members, and I know she was supposed to do a call with our building steering committee chair today, but did, did you guys end up talking today, Kristen?
No, God, we moved to tomorrow.
Okay.
So he'll have a lot of information, but I think really those planning costs, so I think everyone has a lot of lingering questions, and the answers to those lingering questions are tied up in these planning costs. So that's really, we need the planning costs to sort of advance the project to the stage where we can answer a lot of questions about traffic, you know, location, all those kinds of questions. I, I can't answer actually what's in the details of the planning costs, I wanted to talk to Andrew about that before I speak to that.
Yeah, and I think we were all put in a slightly awkward situation last year because this never actually formally was brought to the council, right? So we were, I think that's what we're trying to avoid is that feeling of, I think there was some really good work done independent of us, which is completely fine, but then there was never any sort of formal requests, and then, and then this CIP request kind of turned into almost secondary, right? So there was this confusing timeline, I think, for all of us. So let me ask you this, I don't want to get into the specific questions, but I think you guys have at least all glanced all the council questions. Do you read those and kind of nod your head saying, yes, those are the things we were, you know what I mean? Do you guys find yourself in agreement for some, I don't expect 100% agreement, trust me. I know some of those in there are probably more positional than they are, you know, inquisitive, but do you guys find yourself reading those saying, yes, that's the box I wanted to check as well? Or do, is there some alignment on the, on that? Because obviously that would be important, right?
I think that there is a lot of alignment in those questions, like definitely I went through that list and was like, yep, that's what the study will help with. Yep, that's what the study will help with. I don't think that includes all of them. You know, there are some that I think we do need to work together to answer, in particular, like what debt looks like for the town. That's, there are some that we can't do alone, but yeah, a lot of them are things that we anticipate if we invest in this study, we will get those answers.
Yeah, some of the things that I've just been talking to her, who was on the building steering committee as well, I could look through some of those, like the questions around traffic, those will be answered in the study. The question on location, that's going to be answered in the study. Conservation, wetlands, all that's going to be in the scope of what we asked them to do. But the other thing we need to keep in mind is that scope is flexible, right? So we can, we can shrink it and we can expand it if there are more questions that, that we think we need answers to. Now presumably that's going to come at a higher cost if we want to expand the scope. But I think what, what we need to do, and I think, you know, we already have is an action that we're picking up or progressing is like get a more detailed look of what that scope is currently and share that with you guys for the time that the request comes through in the budget. But I think Kristen's right, the majority of those questions are going to be answered in our study.
So if you have the inkling that you're going to get funding, will you go through like a request for proposal or some kind of defined scope or do a scope of work somehow?
We've already done that.
You've already done that? Okay, well, maybe that's something we can share with the council.
Yep, so the building steering committee had, had interviewed two firms, and they were to the point where they were ready to recommend a firm to the board. And literally like two weeks into the pandemic, we realized that we did not have the funding in our existing CIP to secure a firm. And so that kind of came as a blow to everybody in terms of sticker shock, we just had no idea. And, and there was a breakdown between what the building steering committee thought we had in our budget and, and, you know, what, whether or not those, that funding was going to even be available. And so presumably we could pick right back up with the two existing proposals, and the building steering committee could do a review of the scope of work that each firm presented, and their recommendations for which firm to go with. They had, they had definitely come to the point where they were ready to make a recommendation to the full board.
And so you had numbers from those guys, so you guys have a, right, so those numbers are bigger than 100,000.
Are those, is that public information? Is that something that you can share with the council? I mean, that might help to bridge some of the gap too.
That I don't know. I don't know whether because we hadn't entered into a contract yet, John, whether or not that was being negotiated in private, because it puts us in a compromising position if both firms knew what the scope of work was and et cetera, et cetera. But I, I may be talking out of line on that.
So we're going to define a, a scope of work and give it out, put it out for bid. We put out a solicitation for somebody, them to come back and tell us what, okay, so that's a little different.
And is there a way to align those RFPs and their responses with some of those council thoughts as well, along with your thoughts, obviously too? So I mean, I don't, or do you think the next step would be to kind of have those to be guiding principles for whatever firm you go with, I assume, correct?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I would, I personally would view it that way. I would say, okay, it makes sense to reverse engineer this now and say, these are the questions that we think need to be answered in order for this to be successful. And so these are the services that we are looking to have your firm do, and now give us a bid.
Yep. Hey, Tom, you have something to add?
I, it was interesting just, just sitting on the outside, but I, I'm too tempted. I don't mostly hit task well, so I might as well be involved. So I'm just curious, do you know what the deliverables will be out of this process, or is that still to be defined with the preferred consultant? Are there tangible things out of this process?
Do you mind like explaining what you mean, like, like is there a traffic study, is there?
Will location be understood? Will building size approximately grades, you know, kind of, the next step would be finer grain architectural and, and design work, I presume?
That was all part of it, Tom, yes. So I think, without saying any numbers, I recall that the original scope that they came back with was pretty significant, and that we asked if they could sort of de-scope it slightly to make it more appealing to get into the, to the budget. So what, what we said we needed to figure out is what was, what did we remove in order to get it to a number that we felt that we were comfortable with putting in the CIP budget? And we had to come forward and share that more explicitly, because I can't answer that question right now. So I think that's some work that we have to do with the previous building steering committees to figure out what was taken out of scope in order to get a reduced number.
I mean, very often, I don't know what process you followed and what you asked for initially, but very often you will select the consultant that will help you through this preliminary kind of planning phases, but also have the expectation and the expertise to be able to take you through design and construction. And typically their fees are based on a percentage of estimated cost of the project. You can also hire someone just to provide, you know, direct consultancy with a defined scope of work, and it ends, and then you go through another process to select the next step. Again, I don't know what process you've already undertaken, it doesn't make sense to repeat it. So if you have one and you're ready to select, I was just curious as to which path that, that is likely to take.
It was definitely the previous, the, the first path. This was definitely of, of full scale. They were going to do the preliminary work, leading to a very specific project.
And so I imagine the pricing is probably a percentage of project cost?
I assume so, but I don't know that.
A design-build arrangement, Tom, that you're, you're thinking about?
It doesn't necessarily need to be design-build, but it's kind of soup to nuts. It's starting from planning through, through execution, if you will. Typically, the pricing is, you know, between 12 and 15% of project costs is kind of the soft cost associated through completion.
Let me just try to unkind, shifting gears a little bit, right? I think, you know, I think one of the things as a council, I think, and this is, it's not, this is not completely fair to keep talking about the community center committee and comparing it to you guys. So first of all, I apologize for that, but I think one of the things that, you know, we, we look for is like, hey, what is, you know, where is the 50-page report, you know, or where is, you know? Do you, do you see that, and that didn't come out of the steering committee, and that's okay. Do you think we were expecting that to come out of the steering committee and that we shouldn't have expected that? That should be more from the, from the firm that you guys are going to engage? Like, were we expecting too much too soon? Does, do you guys ever know what I'm articulating? Because I, because I feel like out of the steering committee, well, first of all, the steering committee never presented anything to the council, and that's completely fine. I'm not, that's not on them, I think that was on the timing, correct? But, you know, I think one of the things when we say, hey, what, what does the council want to see or what would help this project? You know, to Tom's point of, of a deliverable, were, were we expecting deliverable maybe too early from the steering committee, and in reality, that would happen once you engage a firm? Does that make any sense?
I think it makes sense, and I, I think it's hard to compare the two because they're really different objectives. So the building steering committee did produce something to us that was part of our meeting when we voted on it.
Yep.
It's very comprehensive from where we sat. It did not include like a financial analysis. I'm trying to think back to that community center. That was really, really detailed, and I do think that level of detail would come when we hire the firm. So they're sort of different, you know, the community center was starting from scratch. This is, the building steering committee had to evaluate existing buildings and make a recommendation for that. It was almost like a first step. So yeah, maybe you guys were looking for something different from us in the first stage. And we see that as the next stage.
Yeah, that, because that's one of the things I've just been mulling over this week was, you know, the, if the question is, you know, what, what do I wish I had? Well, I wish I had that thing I could thumb through, right? That looks like the budget book or what have you, and, you know, I want to see the four different places that the school could go and, you know, and, and maybe us understanding when that actually happens will help, right? And, and maybe that's, maybe that's not at the end of the firm's work, maybe that's a deliverable that they actually can execute, you know, a third of the way through the work, or, you know, what, what have you, but.
Could I just after an observation, I'll speak for myself only, but I suspect there's some members of council that might feel the same. Present company perhaps not included, or you can speak for yourself, but I, I think there's a disconnect, and maybe I was asleep, but through your prior planning process, I fail to appreciate kind of the work that went into, and this is kind of what Paul was talking about, went into making that fundamental decision of a consolidated school. And I, I guess I just want to, for my own purposes, make you aware that not everyone appreciates the process you followed and how you concluded that. And I, I think for you to be successful, that needs to be fundamental understood around every kitchen table in Scarborough. And if us on the inside have some question around how that process happened and how that decision was made, I think it maybe can be done with just some, you know, doing some additional work through your committee. But I think every project that I've been involved with and the ones that are successful, you need to establish the need. It needs to be fundamentally understood universally, as much as you can in town. And then you talk about solutions, but you've got to really document the need first, and then the solution second. That's just my two cents of advice from doing this through the years.
Yeah, I hear that, and I think I agree with you that we can absolutely do more to make that need understood. I think we do see the need, which is how we landed there, and I think all of this information is available. It's just a question of us putting it all together, hopefully bringing Andrew or someone back into like, to really demonstrate the need, but I think all of that does exist. I don't think that work needs to be done, it's just how we share it with the council and the community. And I definitely think we can improve in that area.
Yeah, and I think it's, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Sarah.
I, Tom, I can agree with that sentiment as well, I mean, I've got April shaking her head too, like I think we all agree that we could have done better and maybe bring people along more. I do want us to be careful though that we be just trying to figure out what we need to do and then move forward and, and not spend too much time on this concept that we didn't share, because there, I mean, there were multiple opportunities, including two school board votes on a consolidated school, so the board that we're on, as well as a prior board voted following a Herriman study, and we did have a public hearing as well as a couple of board meetings where this information was presented. So all of that said, completely agree with you that we could have done a better job, but I also want to make sure that no one's thinking that we've had did this in the darkness of the night, because there was plenty of opportunities for engagement, as well as there was a town council on the building steering committee who, you know, maybe wasn't giving updates as regularly as, as.
Yeah, and just the time that's passed since those discussions have been had, I think it, it's going to benefit you to take a half step back before you take a step forward, I think. Don't assume that everyone's on the same page as you. I mean, you guys are immersed in this, and I don't doubt that you've done your work and have arrived at a very rational, logical conclusion, but that doesn't mean the rest of us are along with you.
Yeah, I mean, I can say I'm just not clear right now on what, I understand that you voted on consolidation, but is it K2, is it pre-K23? There's details that I don't, I'm not sure where we're at in the process, and I think some of you might be familiar with that, but I think at least getting alignment on some of the basics about what, you know, what are we building? Why are we building it? And, and then where, where's it going to go, or where could it go? I, I think will ease the conversation as we, we move forward, because right now it's still very abstract to me, and there's a whole number of school projects that I think I could fully get behind. I just don't know enough details right now to, to really even opine on, on, on this one.
This is where we might break down though, John, because if you need those answers in order to approve this budget, we're not going to have those, because we need this money to get those answers.
So we don't know, we know, okay, so that's, that's fair. So we don't know how many grades or what grades.
Yeah, so that's exactly.
To Tom's point, that's going to be a deliverable, and it's a, we can share with you the presentation or the meeting, and send a link and say, watch this meeting, and you'll then have as much information as we have, right? Yeah, a lot of those questions, we need to progress this to answer, and I, those are the questions that everybody has, and those are very important, which is why it's, it's so important that we progress this.
Maybe I'll simplify it for you, I think of it as why, what, and where. So the why is something that you, I think, maybe need to do a little backtrack on to educate us all why. That's the, you know, getting the, the need understood. And the what and the where, I think are probably what you're going to find out through this next level of exploration. You know, what specifically is it? How many grades? And, and where? I think that's another big part of the consideration.
And I think that exchange between John and Sarah just, I think that just sums everything up right there, right? Right? I mean, I think that there's some of these things that we thought there should be answers to, but nobody knows them, and that's okay, we need to find them. And we can invest some money to find those answers, and that's completely okay, right? And so.
It's worthwhile.
Right, exactly.
Go ahead, Paul, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think when it, when it, whenever it gets bubbled up to our level, it's, it just, it's, it's at the, do you support a consolidated school for $100 million? But that, so it's like, we're not having even the right conversation right now, where, you know, where, and so to John's point, I think we feel like sometimes we were supposed to know that, and we were like, well, we don't know, right? And I think you guys are saying, well, you're not supposed to know yet, we need to work towards it. You know, my other observation is to Tom's point, because you guys do, I think everybody agrees, we have to take a half step back on the why, you know, repackage the why, re-present the why. You know, it's not all about enrollment too, right? I mean, we had a, we had a, you know, I, I think that the council and the general public needs to understand this isn't just enrollment. You know, maybe there's three major drivers of this decision, and I think those other two drivers need a little bit more attention. You know, I think when we had our, when we had our joint workshop on enrollment, it was very informative, but it was also quite confusing, right? And so, and, you know, I think that, you know, I still don't, I personally still don't even understand the enrollment aspect, and, and that's, that's on me, right? But it, but it is, there's more to this than just the kids are coming, right? Right? And so we deserve, we deserve to articulate that better, right? All of us do. When I say we, I'm talking about us, so.
Yeah, I think we all want to be prepared for the future.
Yep.
There's a, that's a pretty, a pretty broad topic, right? It's how we're going to teach our kids and how many they're going to be, and there's a whole spectrum there, but we want to continue to be, I think, a top-notch school system. And I think we'll have general support for that as well, so.
And ideally, I'd really strongly suggest, you know, we're talking the order of magnitude you are. I think you need to be offering up a global system-wide solution, not just addressing K2s. You get to pre-K consideration, I suppose, in the mix. You've got pre-existing issues at the middle school, so I don't want to overcomplicate it, but I think that's the sort of thing that's going to resonate with the public and stay. On the flip side, if you don't have solutions for all the problems, they're going to say, well, why the heck can we spend all this money? We still have these problems over here. So I don't know if you can do that, all that, but I think it's worth a try, or at least be prepared to answer why you can't.
I, I think like looking at how Portland approached their schoolwork, not all of it, but the bulk of it, and Cape Elizabeth, they're looking at more of a macro. It's not necessarily just one project, it's multiple projects that kind of tie together. I think that's the same concept, is, is look at, let's, how are we making sure that we're taking, we're biting off the pieces that are going to help our schools continue to be excellent? And excel, and, and again, I think the community supports our schools, or, or would get behind supporting our schools, we just need to make it clear where we're going.
So I just want to reiterate too, I, I, you know, I dumped, I think, I think all seven counselors gave you, gave different questions there. So, you know, I, I consider it my job to set an appropriate expectation, you know? Again, we're not getting answers today, and frankly, some answers are made to be debated about a year from now. Some of those questions are questions that need to be asked a year from now, not necessarily here, but I do appreciate you guys opening the door to just say, hey, let's, you know, let's, let's try to, you know, do this right. And I'm not suggesting it wasn't done right, I think it was a comedy, you know, it's one of those comedy of error things where, you know, it couldn't, I don't think one thing happened, went our way in that four-month stretch, you know? And still the council hasn't even seen this, so we're still, we're trying to work with you guys, and we're also not, it hasn't been quote, "brought to us." So that's, it's awkward for all of us, but I do appreciate, I think this is the right place to start, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, in terms of the budget for next year, you guys have some discretion with, with how you bring it forward, right? You can try to do it, fund it through your operational budget, which we don't control any of the light on details, or you can put it in the capital budget, which will, right now is planned to be at the end of the process where we review all the, the different capital needs. And I don't know how this year's going to shake out with, with all the other moving parts, because we're filling some holes that we dug last year. And I, I think in general, we'll probably prioritize people over projects. And I just don't, I really don't know what's going to be left, so I, there's, the two options would be, if it's really important, you want to fund it, if you put it in your operational budget, we have to sign off, you can control how it goes. If it's in the capital budget, then it will be, I think, subject to an extra level of scrutiny at the end of the process for whether it's something that we can move forward.
So it's, it's in our capital budget currently, it was last year as well. So the idea of putting the $100,000 in there last year was that we could kind of roll that over to this year, add some more this year, and that would give us the amount that we were going to actually go to do the work. So it's currently in our capital budget, I didn't, I don't think it can actually be in our operational budget, but I'll chat with Kate about that, I don't know if you know.
Yeah, I certainly can, Sarah, but you've never wanted to for obvious reasons, because it puts upward pressure on the mill rate. But in recent years, and this isn't, you know, my interpretation, but we will get legal counsel, we are getting increasing pushback from our bond counsel. The IRS rules have changed such that you can't fund soft costs without, they're, they're really looking to use tangible, durable capital assets for long-term finance. There are, if there are soft costs incurred, I think you can beat back as many as 36 months from the project and reimburse yourselves. But there's a challenge going forward, funding soft costs, like we're talking about using financing methods. And I can put our legal team in touch with yours just to understand what those requirements are, but it may well be that it can only go in your operating budget, frankly, as a function of this IRS rule.
Well, we can't bond it, we're, we're not going to bond this anyways. So either way, is the taxpayer is going to pay for it, whether it's in the capital budget or your operations budget? The primary difference is whether we have that extra level of review.
Fair enough.
Versus saying, you know what, this is absolutely something we need to fund, let's keep it in the operations.
Yeah, so, so your, your point's well taken, there can be different funding sources in the capital budget could be appropriated, but John's point's well taken, the way to avoid much of this discussion is to find a way to fund it. But John's point's well taken, the way to avoid much of this discussion is to find a way to fund it in the operating.
Right, because we're not going to bar, I know you just said this, John, but we're not borrowing money to fund this one way or another. So whether there's a, there's going to be, there's going to be an A next to it in the capital, the CIP budget for appropriated. Right? And so, and to John's point, and maybe, and honestly, for, I don't want to get, I don't want to get in the finance committee's territory. I want to keep this sacred for you guys, so I think we shouldn't go too deep into it. But I will just echo what John said, I mean, if you think about the timeline of things, it's when everybody's the most tired. It's when we've been through everything else, right? I mean, this is, this is exactly, I mean, this was exactly what happened last year, right? We were all under a huge pressure cooker and it was the last thing. It was the last thing. I mean, you know, I mean, I distinctly remember screaming at, at least five people in the Zoom meeting, right? So, so.
I would never talk to you again.
Well, in fairness, we haven't talked that much, right?
I think, I guess my, my question to that, and I agree, Paul, we don't need to go into weeds, but maybe John, I don't know the answer to this is. If, let's, let's say that we did put in our operational budget. Would the full amount have to go on the operational budget or just the additional amount? Because last year, again, we're, we're assuming that we can use a hundred thousand from last year.
Um, I, I actually don't know the answer to that, that'd be either, or some, somebody else's question. I, can you transfer a budget authority from the capital budget to the operating budget? I don't know, probably.
I'm not sure, it matters, the hundred thousand you got in the FY twenty one, you already have budget authorization for, so that's yours to use.
But it's ours to, okay, all right, well, I'll take that away as just like, we can talk about that in our finance.
Yeah, and I can coordinate with Kate on this, on these details too.
The, the other thing is, I don't, it's, it's, it's not going to be an easy ask for us to put it in our operational budget, right? Because we're putting it in there at the cost of something else that needs to be in there. So I understand what you guys are saying, but it's, it's not just a easy switch for us.
Can I, can I ask like a fundamental question? And this can go to finance, you guys can talk this through, this doesn't have to be right now. But, you know, I think sometimes I and other board members struggle with the idea that we're, the school department doesn't own this building. And so we, we get into this gray area over and over and over again about municipal budget versus school budget, because our budget has to go to referendum. So does it make sense for this to become something that's incorporated into the school's operating budget for a building that belongs to the town? And, and it's that weird, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be so fundamentally gray for the library, for example. Because the library doesn't have to go to referendum to get approved. And so here we are, of course, you know, on its face, the money should go in the school's operating budget if we could find a way to make that happen. But then we, but then, you know, to Sarah's point, like, I, it, it's all, you know, puts pressure on the mill rate. Like, no matter what we do, this money is, is appropriated and it puts pressure. But I sometimes just don't, I, I struggle a little bit with the idea that the school would incur all of this cost at the expense of, you know, services or deliverables that we should be giving to the students when it's a building that's going to be owned by the municipality.
I, I agree with you, Sarah, April, I, I think the way we look at it right now is, there's reason for it, right? So when we report financials to different areas, you know, the DOE and whatnot, we, we need to account for capital expenditures and building costs. But it's really, it's a, it's an accounting number, it's not a real number, because you guys don't manage your debt. I view this from a town perspective, I, and I, I'm hoping to transition a little bit more towards that this year when we look at our debt and, and capital spending. And that it's, it's the whole pie. And like, you know, a couple of years ago was public safety building, maybe a library in the future, we had went, went with you in the past. But I, I think we need to take a macro level view of big capital expenditures. And so it, it, to me, it's not, either way, you got to pay for it. Whether it's coming to the school budget or the town budget, you got to pay for it. And it does add a little wrinkle when you say you have to vote on the school budget and you do, or, or we do. But I view this from a, whether it's in your operating budget or in our capital plan, the only real difference is whether I have to look at the line item, item detail to me.
All right, well, I think we said we were going to wrap it up in forty five minutes, right?
Can I ask you guys one more question? You have me thinking because I, because they are town owned buildings and potentially the schools that will be closed are town owned buildings. So at what point do you see the town council jumping into that as to what becomes of those buildings?
I have no.
I think that's a huge piece of the success for us long term of having a combined school pass is knowing what becomes of those buildings.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I have no idea, my answer to that is I have no idea. But you're, you're, but I think to Tom's point earlier is, I think that's part of the holistic work that can be presented, right? Is, you know, I've, I've heard residents and counselors and BOE members alike all have compelling ideas for those three buildings, right? And but literally, that's, you know, those are just ideas right now. And you're right, the irony is, or is, you know, if we turned around and sold those empty buildings, we'd put it in the town coffer. So you guys can own the new building in your budget, but we'll, we'll take the money if we sell the old thing. So I don't know what the problem is now.
But I think, Kristen, some of that will come out of the study you're trying to fund.
Right, right.
With this and that, once you determine which pieces are staying and going and what you're building, then that can spin off, you know, maybe even a whole nother project to try to identify what, you know, reuse possibilities there are.
Kristen, I think that's, that's an important part of the storyline as you, as we collaborate and prepare to go to the voters to secure approval for your school project, is to really tell the complete story.
Yeah.
And I think that could add some helpful juice to your cause, potentially, if, if, if the reuse is well thought out and appreciated by the public.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I, I hope it will be helpful in the long run, but it actually could be potentially damaging to us if we don't have a plan.
Yeah, I know, I agree, yeah, I don't know if this, in, I don't know what the firm scope is, but my guess is that's probably not in their current scope, right? They're probably going to be focused on this project.
But they have to define, so the Harriman study had a whole bunch of options, right? Some of them included moving pre K to Pleasant Hill or, you know, different moving buckets. Well, that's a reuse possibility that I don't think we know quite yet, because you need to do more work to figure out exactly what's going into the consolidated piece. So I, I, I think the piece, you know, that, that project isn't that far off, but I, I think you need to kind of figure out logically where are things going to settle? And what's an opportunity for reuse when you identify that you're not going to need it anymore?
Okay, so I'm, I'm just going to beat this drum again, that, you know, the success of this money being in the CIP, you know, hinges on good communication between the board and the council. And so this is step zero, what's step one?
I, I did, did confirm that the hundred thousand in the current year was in capital and it was appropriated. So I can say for certain, if it goes capital, it will be appropriated, that's how we'll program it. But I think there is a conversation to be had, whether it's, goes in operating as well.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like step one is joint finance at this point. I mean, I, I could be wrong, but I, I think this conversation was necessary, you know? But I think that you guys, as your body, you, you have kind of our feedback, this conversation. So I don't know when, what, you know, I don't know where, how you guys look at that, right? But dust off some of these, some of these proposals, compare it to what we talked about today and what we've emailed you with some thoughts. And, and then maybe, you know, maybe, maybe it's not joint finance, maybe we reconvene in a format like this, if that, if that's necessary. But I think you guys as a body, you know, take a couple of weeks and, you know, reach out, we'll see, see where we are. You know, I don't think that there's any, you know, it, obviously, last year made things very difficult, but I don't, I don't think you guys are up against this huge amount. I'm not, I had, I have no idea where counselors are at this point, right? But there's certainly not, there's not certainly an energy of, of, you know, we don't, we don't want to hear about this, right? And so, you know, I think everybody really, I think every counselor really appreciated that we were doing this, right? So to me, to me, we, we have started this conversation as best as possible. And, and we've all recognized where things went wrong and how we can do better. I don't know where everybody is, so to speak, nor should they really, frankly, nobody should really know where they are right now. But I think this is the right start. You know, my hunch is step one's joint finance, but I could, I could be wrong, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the important thing is to keep the conversation going. So you can do that by putting in your capital budget and we'll have a discussion at joint finance. Or, or, or maybe it's a, you know, bringing it to the, something to the full council. I suspect that you probably don't have enough details ironed out to bring the full presentation to the council yet, but that, that's what I feel like I'm hearing. But, you, you know, to authorize three hundred thousand this year, some people, or two hundred thousand.
Unless, unless, unless we need to put it in our operating budget. I, listen, I think we got to rip off the Band-Aid and just do a presentation for, for council, get everybody on the same page, get everybody's questions answered. I don't want to, you know, fiddle around with this at the community level. What's, I think like Tom said, we have to take one step back to focus that story. So let's, you know, we had talked about getting Andrew or asking, you know, somebody from the building steering committee to come and actually make that presentation to the council. Answer the questions that we can answer and then be very clear about what the scope of the money, what the money of the project is going to help us do. And then, you know, we can debate later on down the process, John, where it belongs. But I don't think that, like, I think that's putting the cart in front of the horse a little bit. We got to have everybody on the same page first before we debate where the money is going to go.
Well, you're not going to get any resistance from me if you want to do that, just tell me when you want to do it and we'll do it. I just, you know, but I'm going to follow your lead, right? When you guys think it's the right time, I, timeline wise, I think that might be a little tight, Sarah is my hunch. But if, if it isn't and it works and, you know, we love to workshop, so we'll, we'll do a workshop, so.
It's getting really tight doing a full comprehensive presentation for the full council. Can we make a plan to meet, I would think more this group than finance to discuss? Like, because when we touched base with Andrew, see, define what's in the scope of work that that three fifty or three seventy five covers. I want to make sure your expectations of what we can deliver from that study versus what is actually in there. Like, I think we need to align on that before this budget gets too far down line. Like, I don't want you thinking that they're going to come back and tell us exactly what to do with the land at Blue Point, when that's not even like, that's like six steps down the line. Or not even at all part of their plan for the scope of work, which I haven't seen it. So we will work on that with Andrew, but I think that the council and the board need to be on the same page of what our ask is in the budget and what that covers, what we're going to be able to give to you with that money.
I just want to make sure, Andrew is a citizen, a resident who is on the steering committee, chairing it?
He's the chair, yeah.
Seems to have a lot of, I mean, are, are you relying on him to scope out this next level effort?
It, it's already been done and we can ask Hillary too. I mean, or Alicia, they all have that same information of what.
Okay.
Because we had to scale it back, which Sarah said earlier, we had to cut back what the firms actually think we need to do. We couldn't really make that work in a budget, so it scaled back, so it's just sitting down and seeing what got scaled back.
Well, that, but that's working with a hundred thousand dollar budget, right?
No, even the three fifty or three seventy five was a scaled back.
Well, I, I guess my, my parting comment would be, no one on council should be surprised that this is coming forward. In fact, the council's goals recognize that there are ongoing capital needs that the council will continue to support. They didn't want to advance, but will support, this is what you're doing. Since you have a selection process nine tenths of the way done, one thing you could do is to select your preferred contractor, consultant, negotiate a scope of work, you know, keeping in mind the input you've just received from town council. I don't think you can or should be doing all of those things at this juncture. But I think the best thing you could do is very, be very clear about what you're getting for this money. And the way to do that is negotiate a defined scope of work.
And do you guys want to see that in what format? In the budget presentation and a small?
I, I don't think any, I, I don't think you guys want, I don't think we should commit to that, a timeline yet, because I don't, I guess I'm a little ignorant to how long, what. I, first of all, I completely agree with what Tom just said, right? So how long does that take? I don't know, right? So I think that we might have to play that a little bit by ear. Do I, would I like to get this to see daylight before we're knee deep in the budget? Yeah, I think, yes, I, I appreciate that sentiment and I would get behind it. But I think we're going to have to react, I mean, I think Tom's precisely correct. I mean, it would, this process would be very clear and easy to understand if we had, here's what we heard. We took as much as we could that were, what we thought was valuable, here's the scope of work, here's the bid, and then we're, and then we're off to the races, so to speak. So maybe that's, maybe that's in a week, but maybe that's in a month, I don't, I just don't know, I have no idea, so.
Yeah, that work has been done, they, they did all that, the building steering committee did that last year. And it's just a question of updating, making sure the costs are still good.
Right, with event, with the, right?
I think what they're suggesting, Kristen, from understanding is that we actually, we can do in the building steering committee and ask them to select, which is basically where we left it. Right?
Yeah, I was going to say, my, I think the concern, and of course, I'm trying to remember, you know, meeting from a year ago. But I think the concern was, can we negotiate in good faith with money we don't have?
Right.
And so, you know, trying to secure a firm who's going to be willing to do something, knowing that there, we won't have that money until the middle of June or July first.
Absolutely, you can, don't tell, don't, don't take no for an answer. I mean, you can't sign a contract.
I am not the chief negotiator, Tom, thank God.
Don't sign a contract and commit to funds, but I think any firm with the prospect of having a project of this size and value, frankly, this is, they have all sorts of public sector clients that are in a very similar situation. So even if you have to pay them a little retainer to get them to a point, to keep them on the, on the line, you know, that's cheap money. But they should be willing to wait it out through June to, to get the full budget approval.
And you, I mean, you have your hundred grand for that retainer, right? I mean, that's precisely.
Yeah, which is, which is a different position than when we were in last year.
Correct, right, and Tom's right, I mean, these guys are used to dealing with town councils and BOEs all the time, this is what they do, you know? They're used to waiting for their money.
Hey, do the math, whoever you hire is going to get eight to ten million dollars from you.
Yeah, yeah.
It's worth the wait.
Let's not put out numbers there.
Mark my words, you're going to spend at least ten percent of project costs on support.
I just know, I just don't want people to do.
Hold on, let me check to, let me check.
Know what that big number is.
So I'll put it on YouTube in three days and then in four, five, six days.
Well, it's ten percent of whatever number you end up with. So it's, it's, anyway, slice it, it's a, it's a sizable project of high stature that any, any firm would be dying to have.
Good, anything else? So I'm hearing, just to close it up, so we all agree, I'm hearing that there's a possibility to reengage the steering committee to solidify a relationship with one of the two firms that have responded to the RFP. And then be a little more, then, once that is done, we can then articulate what the deliveral would be and for how much money. And then, once that is done, we can present that to the council to understand the ask more. And, and the question, the, the, the question mark, so to speak, is what is the timing of that? And I think we, we should agree to keep that flexible and touch base in a week's time and then, and, and take it from there.
John and Paul, you'll probably kick me for saying this, but the reality is, we have a need that, that needs to be addressed. And the longer you don't, the more expensive it gets. So, you know, we can be penny wise and, and dollar foolish. I guess my advice is if you need more than two fifty to do this right, you should ask for it. You should ask for what you need to do, the, the work that's ahead of you. And obviously, the need, you'll have to defend why that's the case, but you're not going to advance this project unless you start it off on the right foot.
Yeah, I, I agree, Tom, I think understanding what scope you trimmed already, you know, those might be important pieces that, that you want to know now and, and not wait and find out after you've broken ground somewheres. So I think understanding all those and the time, the key is the timing. So I'm not going to put the cart before the horse in terms of whether you have to engage or present the, the details to vet or approve the funding. Every council is going to view that a little differently, of course. And you'll know hopefully in a couple of weeks whether you can actually accomplish some of those things in terms of selecting the, the preferred vendor and getting some details around the scope of work.
Okay, Tom, I'm going to, you probably saw this, I, for some reason, this wasn't going on YouTube, so I'm going to download this. Okay, Tom, I'm going to, you probably saw this, I, for some reason, this wasn't going on YouTube, so I'm going to download this and can I email it to you and then you send it to Tristan? For him to load.
Okay, sometimes it takes a little while, hours or days for that to happen, but we'll try. Not from my end, but we'll see if the recording comes right down.
Well, they're, they're big files, so I mean, it's going to take me an hour, hour and a half to even download this bad boy, so.
We'll get it up as soon as I have it.
Yep. All right, everybody, thank you. That was, that was, I I I dare say that was productive, so.
Very much so. Thank you, guys.